It is nine AM and I will call to order the February second, two thousand and twenty one. Uh, meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk clerk please call the rule?
Mr. Shadwick?
Here.
Mr. Sparks?
Here.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Here.
Mr. Wees?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. If everyone can make sure that all the microphones, phones and other electronic devices are muted. When you are not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings as clearly, I would appreciate it. Now, if Brad, our IT director could instruct everyone how to raise their hand in the meeting. Brad?
Good morning. If you're assuming that you're using the Zoom client. When you select toward the bottom of the screen participants. You will see over in the lower right hand corner of your screen, a raise hand function. If you select that, that lets the host know that you would like to speak in the meeting. And I will request that you unmute at the proper time. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Brad. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting. Where citizens may speak on county government usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items not on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a hand raised. I will ask, I will ask Caitlin Butts to unmute.
Okay. Good morning, Caitlin.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Great. Please state your name and address.
My name is Caitlin Butts. Um, I'm working at D VAC. Do you want like personal or work?
Yeah, you're you're I personal, we need.
Personal one, it's one five five one Briar Gate Drive.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of D VAC. Um, is this, should I wait? I didn't know if this was on the agenda. Um.
Yes, yeah, you have a you have a speech to do here a little bit.
Perfect. Okay, sorry. I'll go ahead and wait then.
Okay, well, thank you. I didn't know what I'm just sitting here reading your name. I think I know that name, but that's right down here. Okay, yeah, you'll be in just a second.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Thank you. Okay, now, if you mute mute yourself back. Okay, thank you. Uh. Are there entered any, uh, at this time, we will move to our consent agenda, which consists of. Approval of prior minutes as presented, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll. And approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. Okay, uh, we will move into action items at this time. Item one.
Is teen dating violence awareness proclamation with Caitlin Butts from D VAC.
Good morning, Caitlin.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm back. I'll just jump right into reading it.
Okay.
The Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month Proclamation, February, two thousand and twenty one. Whereas one in three adolescent in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional or verbal abuse from a dating partner. A figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. And whereas females between the ages of sixteen and twenty four are most vulnerable to intimate partner and sexual violence. Experiencing abuse at a rate almost triple the national average. And whereas high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship. Are more likely to use drugs and alcohol are at a greater risk of suicide. And are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas young people victimized by dating partners. Are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dieting behaviors. And the experience may disrupt normal development of self-esteem and body image. And whereas nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse. Took place in a school building or on school grounds. And whereas only thirty three percent of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. And only eight in eighty one percent of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue or admit they don't know it is one. Whereas by providing young people, parents and professionals with education about healthy relationships. Warning signs of abuse and relationship skills and by changing attitudes that support violence. We recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas. Needs all of the sling needs all of Sling County to work towards ending teen dating violence. And by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships. Assisting victims and assessing the information and support supportive services they need. Creating better and more resources for young people in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies in schools. And engaging in discussion with family members and peers through awareness and prevention of the epidemic of teen dating violence. Now, therefore, the Sling County Board of Commissioners hereby designates February, two thousand and twenty one. As Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month and urges citizens to recognize and assist all those who serve the rights and needs of victims of teen dating violence.
Thank you. And at this time, do you do you have any programs, uh, virtual or anything else coming down the road?
Yeah, the one that D VAC is doing on our own is, um, on February twenty fifth at eleven. We're doing a Zoom meeting. You can find it all on our Facebook page. Um, so we'll be hosting a Zoom training on teen dating violence and how to respond to that and like. If you're a parent, how to respond for your kid, um, so that you can find that. And then all through the month of February, we'll just be posting. Different stats and resources that people can utilize, um, for teen dating violence.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Chairman, I move we declare February, two thousand and twenty one as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month.
Commissioner Wees, I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, uh. I move the declare February, two thousand and twenty one as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
You bet. Move on to the next item.
RFA one one five dash two one bid award for two thousand and twenty one pipe culverts with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Hey, good morning, everyone. So I'm here this morning to, uh, discuss and take action. On the Sling County Road and Bridge Department request to award the bid for two thousand and twenty one pipe culverts. Sealed bids were open on January twentieth, two thousand and twenty one at eleven AM. And we just received one bid, um, and that bid was from Wellborn Sales. You should have in your packet, uh, the bid tab that 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 provides a little more details, um, of the bid. So. And and these, um, materials are are just to be used in our, um, stock inventory. You know, they're not designated for a specific project, but as, uh, maintenance needs them, um, well, we'll have those available. Alternatives for action is to accept the bids as indicated, um, and the staff recommendation or two would be to reject the bids. Staff recommends to accept a bid from Wellborn Sales in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty seven dollars and seventy seven seventy six cents. For the pipe culverts in sections and dimple fans. Um, the funds to purchase this, these materials will be taken out of the two mil, um, or the one twenty five account. So is there any questions?
Uh, Justin, this is, uh, Commissioner Bob Vidrickson. Uh, I'm just curious with just one, one bid. Uh, do we physically send these out to people? Or or do we just post them on our website and let them come to us? Or how does that process take place?
So, no, we we've we physically, um, well, digitally email, um, vendors. And so I did call. So in the past, we've only received and really we only email them out to to two vendors. Um, and so I called the other vendor and they're out of Hutch, um, and I I talked to the rep. Um, and for whatever reason, it kind of slipped through the cracks that they didn't submit a bid. Um, they've they intended to, uh, but it just didn't happen on their end. Uh, for whatever reason, he was going to do some investigating to see kind of what happened. The the last two years, though, the Wellborn Sale has won the bid, um, you know, and so the, um. Anyway, so I I I asked, well, first of all, we did kind of an evaluation of Wellborn Sales bid for this year and kind of compared it to last year's prices. And they're in the in the ballpark of about a ten percent increase. And so when I talked to the other vendor, I I asked them about what he's seeing as an increase. Um, on on their side of it, and he's saying it's about that ten percent. Uh, the material is just taking a big jump this year. So I'm confident that the prices that we have are are good prices.
Well, I'm, yeah, and I'm not contesting that whatsoever, uh, but I'd like to see us, if we can, broaden our, uh. You know, our our scope of, uh, of suppliers in that regard. I mean, two is. Just like this, if one of them fell through the cracks one time and we've only got one bidder or something happens, so.
Yeah, there's just not a lot of of, um. People available that that sell pipe. Um, you know, I know that, you know, and it's kind of like equipment. Um, you know, when you you buy cat, you're buying a, you know, caterpillar, you know, from from one vendor. Um, you know, so Contact makes pipe, you know, they're a big pipe manufacturer. They only allow Wellborn Sales to sell their pipe. Um, you know, and I think they've got a plant in, uh, Topeka, uh, and that's it for that. Um, J and J Drainage is there, you know, they manufacture their own pipe in Hutchinson. Um, you know, there's just not a lot of that. I can ask around to see if there's there's other vendors. Um, you know, around, but we have to be careful about it because sometimes you can get. Vendors and I can just put it in the specs, um, you know, that it has to be certified pipe, but what you'll end up getting is some, uh, reject pipe. Or pipe that's not certified. So we just have to be careful about that.
Any other questions from the commissioners at this time? Seeing none, is any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Commissioner Shadwick and Mr. Chairman, I move we award a bid to Wellborn Sales Inc. in the amount of. One hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and thirty seven dollars and seventy six cents for pipe culverts in sections and dimple fans.
Commissioner Wees, I second the motion.
Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And excuse me, excuse me, that is RFA one one five dash twenty one bid award for the two thousand and twenty one pipe culverts. Excuse me, I missed that. Thank you. You have a great day, Justin.
All right, thank you.
Next item?
Item three, review of amendment number one to resolution twenty dash twenty two ninety seven, review of section six mask mandate. With Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Morning, gentlemen. Just as soon as Brad brings up the slides. All right, good morning. This is our update for February second, two thousand and twenty one. Next slide, please. Before we get into the current state of things, I thought we should take a moment and reflect back that. It was this time a year ago where we started having our first meetings, uh, COVID started showing up in the United States. And with our partners started preparing for, uh, COVID's arrival, um, in Kansas and then later at Seline County. So in the preparation and planning phase of things, um, and in the response to this with going on a year now. Next slide, please. All right, so this is your national outlook for the last two weeks. Uh, US cases for the last two weeks are slightly down from the previous two weeks as well as US deaths. Next slide, please. State, uh, situation over the last couple of weeks. I believe that number of sixteen thousand cases is probably the lowest, uh, number of new cases in the state. Uh, over a two week period that I have seen in recent, uh, reporting periods. The same with the statewide deaths, so there's improvement there. Next slide. And more importantly, we can see, uh, in the last two weeks, we've had significant improvement, uh, here in the county. Um, over the last two weeks, only four hundred and eighteen new cases. Um, and thankfully, only six deaths and, uh, have been reported. So we've had reporting periods finally where we were able to say that there were no new deaths, which is a very positive thing. Uh, hospitalizations still continue to remain low. Our two week percent positive rate, uh, is, uh, staying well under the ten percent lately, which is good. Um, it continues to trend in the right direction as well as our two week incidence rate, which is, uh, trending in the right direction. That per one hundred thousand is simply a benchmark that is used, uh, so that counties can, uh, compare apples to apples from county to county. So. Next slide. So looking at the cases per month, we can see January, uh, was much better than both November and December. Again, we see that trend is is looking better. Uh, February, um, so far fifty seven cases in February, but. That's still, uh, much better than what we have been seeing. Um, in fact, our two day average where at one time we were having a hundred cases per day. Has been less than a hundred on our two day average. Uh, so we're still going in the right direction. Next slide. Same thing, uh, deaths were a little bit higher than November, but much, much lower than December. Um, and at this, at this time, none reported in February, which granted, it's only the second of February and it's still early, but. Still, we're headed in the right direction. Next slide. Uh, still have a lot of clusters that we're can, uh, continuously monitoring. Um, no real change there. Next slide. Uh, there are no other major, uh, testing events scheduled at this point. Um, there is the the free testing site still at the Church of the Cross. Um, if somebody wants to get tested again, they can go to that website, go gettested.com backslash Kansas. And then, uh, book a date and time in order to get tested at that site. Otherwise, it's still at this point through your primary care provider. Next slide. Vaccine updates. So we are right now in phase two. Which includes all those over sixty five congregant settings and in high risk, uh, uh, or high contact critical workers. And I'll go into that in a little bit more detail in a minute. Um, originally, we tried appointment, uh, open appointment system. And although that worked, I think it worked a little too well and was hard for people to be able to, uh, register that had issues with technology or a lack of technology. Um, so last week, we transitioned everything to a registration system. And then as doses become available, because our current estimation is only about five hundred doses a week. Um, then we can pull from that list and be able to get people, uh, scheduled, which currently is those over sixty five. Uh, the Salina Senior Center has been a great partner in helping people get registered over the phone. Um, for those that don't have, uh, computers or, uh, internet. Um, and as you can see right there, as of yesterday, there are currently over six thousand that are registered. But at the, at the rate of, uh, vaccine availability, this is going to take quite a long time still. Um. Our short term goal right now for those over sixty five is to get about thirty percent of the over sixty five population based off of our current, uh, uh. US Census numbers, excuse me. Must be about three thousand people in that over sixty five category. And we're about halfway there right now. So we're still looking at least another two to three weeks before we reach that thirty percent. And then we will start adding in additional, uh, groups that are in that phase two. Um, K D H E has listed a comparison of what the, uh, individual counties are getting for doses on a week by week basis. Um, so if you're interested in looking to see what other counties around us or what, you know, how the distribution is looking across the state. That county, uh, vaccine distribution comparison link there, uh, will show you, uh. How many doses each county is getting. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, phase two is that persons over sixty five, those in congregant settings and those high contact critical workers. And I've included in our slides, and if you'll go to the next slide, please. What the K D H E definitions and examples of, um, congregant settings are. And you can see that includes homeless shelters, uh, uh, congregant childcare institutions, emergency shelters, correction facilities. Um, adult care homes, et cetera. And then on the next slide. The high contact critical workers, that's our law enforcement, uh, first responders, corrections, firefighters, grocery store workers. Um, and the list goes on. Uh, you can see from those those slides, including our, our over sixty five population. That is going to be a significant portion of our population. And at the current rate of vaccine coming in, it's going to take us, uh, quite a while to get through all of those. Um, so I ask, you know, people to understand that this is going to be a slow process. Uh, we have a vaccine planning team that's been meeting since December weekly, um, looking at what, uh, what the doses are coming in. Um, what our numbers are, what we can expect, um, trying to plan out as far as we can, which is really only short range still because of those, uh, projections. Um. Everybody that wants to be able to get vaccinated will eventually be able to get vaccinated. It's just going to take quite a long time. Uh, next slide. So as we're putting out information, most people want to know, how do I find out what's happening? So we have many ways in order for people to get up to date information. One of them is through our press release on Monday, Wednesday and Fridays. And our Vax Facts, which we try to include all of the most up to date information on, uh, vaccines in Seline County. Those released on Tuesday and Thursday, and the link is there for people to sign up. Um, I am also on KSAL providing updates on the first, third and fourth Thursday at eight fifteen. Um, I'm also, I've been on K I N A, uh, morning radio show every Saturday for almost the last year, providing updates. Uh, we have our social media for both the, uh, Facebook and Twitter. Uh, last week, we recorded our first FAQ Friday video, uh, that aired on the Salina Media Connection. And the link is there if you want to go and watch that on their YouTube channel. Where we try to cover some of the most asked, um, frequently asked questions since the FAQ Friday. Um, and provide answers to those, um, that we can in general terms. Um, and then, of course, our seline.org coronavirus page, uh, where we have a lot of the, uh, links for much of this information. Next slide. So now we have kind of come full circle where this time last year, we were sitting, watching, waiting, preparing, planning, uh, for. To see what coronavirus was going to do and how it was going to affect things. And even though we've seen significant improvements in the county. Um, we're still in a watching, waiting, preparing, planning, learning phase. Um, as there are variants or mutations of the the coronavirus that are popping up. Um. You know, there are several factors there that I've listed about why it's important that we watch these. Uh, we have already, uh, heard about some increased contagiousness, of course, with the UK variant. Um. As of right now, what I know or what I have been able to, uh, uh, get from information is that. The vaccine will still work against most of these variants. There might be some differences later on as as more information is learned, but. We continue to watch and learn and see what's happening. So that means that people need to continue to remain vigilant about their mask wearing, their social distancing, watching their groups. Uh, their hand washing, staying home when they're sick. Last slide. And so, of course, that means continuing the mask order. And then also I added this last bullet in here. Um, in case everybody wasn't aware, um, I was notified yesterday that the CDC has passed a federal health order. That requires masking on all public transportation, so airlines, buses, trains. And that also includes, uh, train stations, airports, um, bus stations, transportation hubs and the like. Um, and that went into effect last night at eleven fifty nine. Um, if anybody is interested in reading the full, uh, details of that order, I have provided the link there for, um, that order. It doesn't really change what we're doing here in Seline County because we already have local mask orders. Um, but anybody that's going to be be preparing to travel, um, will need to make sure that they are aware of those, uh, new rules. And with that, that concludes my presentation this morning.
Hey, thank you, Jason. You're welcome. Jason, this is, uh, if I might, this is Commissioner Vidrickson. Uh, and and you kind of touched on it, and but I I just want to clarify it. Uh, last Monday and Tuesday, I know that we we, um, the Health Department along with, uh, Salina physicians, uh. Gave out about nine hundred doses, uh, through Monday and Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but but later on, I heard that there was a, uh, also a vaccination clinic on Friday. Uh, is that, is that the, was there something that happened on Friday also?
Not through our side. I think the hospital had some that they, uh, had to use up still. But ours was Monday and Tuesday. Now, keep in mind, while these vaccine clinics are ongoing. And that's one of the logistical challenges with this is that while we are doing, like last week, Monday and Tuesday, we did shot one. We are also now into those windows where we are doing shot two on a lot of the, uh, you know, the few hundred shots that we gave. Throughout the beginning of January. And so we are getting into this consistent cycle where part of the week will be shot one, part of the week will be shot two. And so that's that ongoing amount of, uh, time and effort that goes into that.
Will there be cases or situations where, uh, primary or or, uh. Doctors' offices or or clinics, uh, that they receive doses also and will be administering them?
I think further down the road, I know that was in part of the overall statewide plan that. Those different areas, including pharmacies, would be able to provide vaccinations. Um, the challenge right now across the state is there's just not enough to add in a bunch of different other providers. Because that five hundred is all we're getting as a county.
Right, right.
Nobody else is getting any. It's just that five hundred. And when you add in five or six other providers trying to to give. Then that really dilutes out that, um, that availability. So. Once the numbers get up, that is, I know that the plan is for there to be many more providers, many more opportunities at different places to be able to get it. Um, and if the, um, Johnson and Johnson one that is now, I think, getting close to or about to end its phase three trials. Um, is provided emergency use authorization. um, is provided emergency use authorization, that'll be another option for um being able to get the public vaccinated besides the Pfizer, Moderna.
Okay, well, and, and the reason I asked, Jason, uh, was that I heard it was that the, the uh, the vaccination site was still out of JCPenney's, and I thought we were involved with anything that would happen out there. And that's why I was asking about last Friday, because I hadn't seen anything about that, so. But that was someone else's private, but.
Yeah, so with that vaccine, or that vaccine site, it is a joint project between us, Salina Family, and Salina Regional. And so, um, if in the future, you know, one of them had a, a um, wanted to try and do a vaccine clinic when we have more vaccine, um, you know, but I, that would be possible through that site. However, we are all involved in the planning, the staffing, and the, the um, just being able to run that site, because it is quite a bit labor-intensive too.
Right. One, one other quick clarification, uh, a- as far as the people that are on the list for the future, I mean, I assume that they, are they called by Salina physicians and taken in the order of which they signed up? Is that how that works?
Right, so everybody that has registered, it goes into a master list on the back end. And so, like, right now, since we're still focused on those over sixty-five, Salina Family um as helping to manage that list will be calling people in the order that they registered, tho, for those that are over sixty-five.
Okay.
We start adding in other groups from um those other Phase Two categories, that list is then sortable so that we can get, you know, those that are over sixty-five and then whatever other group, because one of the questions on that registration does ask, you know, do you live in a congregate setting? Um, are you a high-contact critical worker? And then what field um do you work in, so that we can be able to sort it uh that way as well? Registration also helps us in planning. So when we're looking at, say, there are, um, I don't know, say that there's twelve hundred teachers, for instance, um, then we know that that helps us with the planning of, okay, how do we try to manage trying to uh vaccinate all of a certain group?
One last uh question or comment, uh, I'd like you to kind of clarify a little bit. And the ever-present uh rumor mill has it that, uh, on Monday and Tuesday last week, that there were people from out of county, people from out of state even, uh, getting vaccinated at the, at, at the, at the Penny's site. Can you comment on that, one way or another?
I don't know about out of state. There might have been a few from out of county. We did clarify as part of the registration process after that, that you have to either live or work in Salina County um in order to register and get vaccinated here.
All right, thank you.
Jason, Commissioner Wees here. I, I got a couple of questions. The first question, um, with, with the new type of uh uh putting in your name into the, into the hat, um, the, the old system you had, you got a confirmation back that you would be receiving this or that. Under this new system, is there any way that people can check, get confirmation that yes, you are on the list?
Yes, sir. We are working with the technology to figure out how we can get that. Um, at first, it came up with a confirmation page, but we realized that a lot of people are looking for that confirmation email or something of that nature. So we're looking at how we can uh leverage the technology we're using to make that confirmation happen.
Okay, so, and, and that's going to happen on these people that have registered?
Right, so the ones that have currently registered, once we get this, this technology part figured out, which I hope we're able to this, this week, um, then everybody that's currently registered will get their confirmation email, and then anybody registering from this point forward will get their confirmation email.
Sounds great. I, I was just concerned, because I, I know you don't want to be uh besieged with people calling in saying, hey, am I on the list? Am I on the list? I mean, you don't have time for that or, or the ma, or the staffing to do that. Uh, so I, I just thought that would be a, a way for people to know, yes, rest assured you are on the list, and when your time comes, you will be contacted. Uh, my second question is, uh, you, you mentioned when you hit the thirty percent threshold of sixty-five and older, you would start uh doing critical uh workers and, and, and other uh portions of the population. Uh, will, will the uh sixty-five and older continue to get some, just not a hundred percent of them? I mean, are you still bringing the sixty-five and older?
Yes, sir. If we waited, uh, looking at the census numbers, there's a little over nine thousand or so uh over sixty-five, based off the census numbers. And so, quite honestly, at about five hundred a week, it would still take us, you know, probably oh, eight, sixteen weeks, something like that, or more, um, just to get through them. But no, we will still be doing over sixty-five and adding in some of those. So the mixture, um, when we meet this week, we'll be talking about how we're going to start trying to um figure out that mixture. Uh, but we still will be doing over sixty-five as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shadwick here, and I was contacted by a nursing home that um, I've received any of uh, nobody's gotten a shot yet, and I know that that's not your, that's going through Walgreens or CVS, I believe, and that's um.
Well, I spoke to them yesterday, and, and we got what the back issue was figured out, so we're trying to uh work on a solution now for them.
Good. And is that through Walgreens, or is that through us, or?
Well, so with the CVS and Walgreens, they were um primarily contracted to provide it to long-term care facilities. Uh, not necessarily uh retirement communities and assisted living. Um, so there was something that kind of fell through there. Either way, I, I talked to the director over there at that facility yesterday, um, and we're trying to get a solution worked out so that we can get their uh residents taken care of.
Thank you for that follow-up. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Jason. Roger here. Uh, quick question here, is like, in a statement you made a little earlier, is that uh, that you're, you're putting in all these people that have signed up are in a list, and that's how you, you, you call them back as, as how they entered in, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. And now, at thirty, thirty or thirty-five percent, now you start accepting more, and let's say a, a ninety-two-year-old person has, has signed up, and now they keep getting bumped because you've taken all these new people in. How, how do you arrange those numbers when you start taking in new people? And you, you, who do?
I, I see where you're going. So those that, for, say, for instance, and I'm just using a hypothetical right now, because we haven't, we haven't uh finalized our, our procedure on that. But say, for instance, um, with our, our next run of doses, say we get five hundred, and we say that we are going to do, I don't know, an eighty-twenty split, eighty percent over sixty-five, twenty percent of other, and that high-contact critical worker. So since it's all in a, a spreadsheet still, we'll go down that uh to whatever number fills that eighty percent still of those that are over sixty-five who are, who have signed up. And then we will start through um the other categories and that twenty percent.
Okay.
So, those that are over sixty-five, it's not like they're going to get bumped. It just means that in this run, we won't be able to take five hundred over sixty-five, uh, for instance. It'll be a less number, but they're still in their same place on the list, uh, based off of where, when they signed up.
Okay, thank you. That, that's a good explanation. Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Ja, Jason, one last question. Commissioner Wees here.
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you receive any vaccines uh last week that you were uh giving out this week?
Yes, we have five hundred that we are doing this, that we received last week, that we are vaccinating with this week. Um, we are estimated um to get eight hundred this week for next week. Um, we haven't received all of that yet, but we are estimated that, so we'll be making appointments for potentially that many next week. Um, and then whatever we get notified of this week that we will receive next week, we'll make appointments for the week after that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay.
Yes, I have a, I have a comment, Mr. Chair. Jason, I've heard good reports for your uh vaccination facility. It seems to be running smooth and um a few wrinkles worked out to start, but uh, uh, congratulations to you and your partners you're working with to uh make that successful.
And I appreciate that, and, and I, I, you know, I do want to give another shout-out to them real quick, to Salina Family and Salina Regional, because without that partnership, trying to run this facility like this and do this many vaccinations uh would be an extreme nightmare. And so it's with those partnerships um that we're able to do what we are doing here in Salina County uh to try and improve the COVID situation, as well as trying to get people vaccinated. Um, and those partnerships are extremely important, so I just want to give them one last shout-out before I wrap up.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sure there's a consensus just to go ahead and, and leave the face mask going as, for the next two weeks. Seeing that, thank you, Jason.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Next item?
Item number four, RFA one-one-six dash two-one, Project Management for Livestock and Expo Center, with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Commissioners. So as you remember, in twenty-twenty, we obtained a long-term lease with the City of Salina for the Livestock and Expo Center. And as part of that lease was a list of some minimum maintenance and improvement items that we have got to complete within five years to make sure that we satisfy the, the terms of that lease agreement. Back in October of twenty-twenty, we had a conversation with Commission, uh, the Commissioners, as far as uh moving forward with the, completing those projects. And after our discussion, our staff did move forward with soliciting requests for qualifications for project management services uh to help us with completing those projects, as well as looking at helping us with some long-term master planning, and then looking at potential costs or even architectural engineering studies for any future capital projects that were not already listed on the minimum maintenance and improvement items. So on December the twenty-first, we received four uh firms or individuals that submitted their qualifications. We received uh qualifications from VG Consultants out of Manhattan, Kansas, Hutton out of Wichita, Kansas, Vincent Method out of Overland Park, and A Plus Architectural right here in Salina. Our staff reviewed each of the submissions, and we graded them specifically on their experience, their capacity that would be related to a long-term project, basically the five-year um project timeframe, uh, some of their past performance, and then also their experience on working with government projects. Through both the individual and the group evaluation, Hutton was the one that received the overall highest score, as well as the highest marks from the references that were contacted. So this particular request for action is to enter into a contract with Hutton for project management services. It would be at an hourly rate that is established on the, or in the contract, with also the option in the future to evaluate those other capital projects that the Commission might consider. So your alternatives are to approve the contact, the contract with Hutton, to approve a contract with one of the other um firms or individuals that submitted uh their qualifications, or do not approve any contract and provide staff with further direction. Uh, the, of course, our staff recommendation is to approve the contract with Hutton to perform project management services. County Council has reviewed their contract and has approved it. To talk a little bit about the budget piece of this, um, each one of the firms were provided those minimum maintenance and improvement items that are to be completed within the next five years. Um, the best estimate, estimate that we could get from Hutton, based off of their hourly rates and the services for them to provide, is a range anywhere from forty-five thousand to sixty-five thousand that will be paid for with those capital improvement dollars. Any other improvement, in improvement items, such as any of those other capital projects that the Commission would want to consider, that would require any type of architectural, engineering, designing features, that would be a complimentary contract to this original one, and that would be at a percentage or a lump sum part of the project and not as an hourly rate. So, subject to any questions, uh, that is the request that is before you today.
Thank you, Hannah. Are there any questions or comments from the Commissioners?
Yes, this is uh Commissioner Vidrickson. Uh, Hannah, um, you've got it down here that Hutton is uh Wichita, Kansas, and uh, I, I think, it's my understanding also that the Hutton uh does have a field office or, or, or an established office here in Salina, and uh they purchased the previous uh Bus, Booming Row uh construction company, so they do have a presence here in Salina. Is that correct?
That is correct. And the project manager that submitted the qualifications, his office is out of Wichita. And they also have, I believe, an office in Kansas City as well. They've got a couple of different locations that they are in. But primarily, the, the, the point person that would, we would be working with um is out of Wichita, but they do have a present, presence here in Salina.
Okay, well, they're, they're a well-known firm, um, and with uh lo, lots of action going on all over the state and, and well-qualified, I'm sure. So, that's my comment.
Are there any other questions from the Commissioners? Are any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. I will bring it back to the Commission for more discussion or possible action.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this. Go ahead.
Yes. Go ahead, Robert.
All right, I'll unmute. Go ahead, Monty.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the Hutton Corporation Project Management Service, Services Contract presented by staff.
Okay.
Commissioner Wees, I second that motion.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we, uh, uh, a re, a, RFA number one-one-six twenty-one, Project Management for Livestock and Expo Center, for Hutton Construction. Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Next item?
Item number five, RFA one-one-seven dash two-one, Rural Fire District Number Seven, donation of air-packed cylinders with Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah, again.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of Rural Fire District Number Seven. They are requesting for Commission approval to donate fourteen Scott Brand twenty-two-hundred PSI aluminum cylinders to the Osborne Fire Department. Uh, these cylinders are no longer used in the air packs that Fire District Seven uses. Um, and then also, there's only one other district that utilizes them, but they only utilize them for training. Uh, they were contacted and they were not interested in um having these donated to Fire District Number Six. So, um, this particular department is just requesting to donate them to the Osborne Fire Department. Uh, Fire District Seven did receive these on a donation back a few years ago, um, and since then, they have just um upgraded into using composite forty-five-hundred cylinders. So these are just ones that have been sitting in the fire station for a couple of years now, and they, the Fire District just feels it can be used better with another volunteer fire district. Um, there is no budget impact on this. Once donated to the Osborne Fire Department, they would become, the Osborne Fire Department would become responsible for this equipment. Um, and again, these cylinders are no longer used. Um, the Fire District also did look into selling them, but based off of current prices, they just didn't think it would bring any type of significant profit whatsoever, and again, feel that it would just be better served with another volunteer district or fire department within the state of Kansas.
Okay, thank you, Hannah. Yeah, sounds like a good deal. So are there any other comments from the Commissioners?
Commissioner Vidrickson, and uh, I, I think that we should go ahead with this uh, uh, and be a good neighbor to Osborne County and Osborne Rural Fire, and the fact that we have had them donated to us, uh, I really like the fact that we can just pass them along and, and someone else uh. have good use from them. So I'm, I'm fully in favor of it, so.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments by Commissioners? Any members of the public who wish to speak?
Mr. Commissioner, nobody, Mr. Chairman, nobody has their hand raised at this time.
Thank you, Brad. I will bring it back to the Commission for more discussion or positive, possible action.
Chairman, this is Commissioner Shadwick, and I move we approve the donation of Rural Fire District Number Seven cylinders to the Osborne Fire Department as requested by staff.
Commissioner Wees, I second that motion.
Are there any further comments? If not, I will call for the vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Now we'll move on to informational items.
Item number one, Saline County Committee for Reducing Jail Population.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Phil Smith Haynes, County Administrator. I'm bringing this item before the Commission today for discussion. This is in follow-up to comments that Commissioner Shadwick made during the reorganizational mission, reorganizational meeting of your Commission, too many words running together there, back in January. And so I have reviewed the existing bylaws that were established for the Committee for Reducing Jail Population pursuant to Amendment Number One to the Resolution 15-2178 adopted August 1st of 2017. And I have some suggestions that I think the Commission might want to consider if you wish to continue with the Committee or alternatively, I think it might be time to decide whether you want to not continue with the Committee. So I'd be happy to address any questions and see if Commissioner Shadwick has additional comments as well.
Just a couple of things, you know, when I was reappointed to this Commission, I, just made me kind of think of where we've been and is it appropriate, is this Commission still think that that's a priority, et cetera? A little history on this is started this, I believe, Philip, five years ago, maybe six years ago. Trying to address the obvious concern of all the, you know, the prison overcrowding and spending a million dollars a year and kicking things people off and, you know, is there better ways to do things? That was a, it was a pretty big committee. Wide range of individuals. And over time, it just became a build-up jail. And the Committee was reduced to a very small, small group. And focus wasn't about reducing population of jail. Fine, you know, that's all good, jail was built and. But I'm not so sure that there's a, unless the Mission kind of comes back with, it's time for us to continue to do some of the things that we looked at. You know, we, I just, I feel like if we do this Committee again, we're gonna have to re-contact some people. Get them back to, and then, you know, what is the direction, what is, what is this Mission? There were some good things that came out of that, you know, the two things was Drug Court. I think everybody agrees was very successful. We probably could expand that into other areas. And then the O'Handys program has done so well, too. And I know that there's some struggles there, but I think that that's been a very successful program. So. That's kind of my thoughts and didn't know where the rest of you stood on, on this. I'm happy to be on the Committee again and happy to, to work at, you know, continuing to try to reduce the jail population because trends aren't, aren't good. Don't want to be in a situation where, when that was.
Thank you, Monty. Are there any other Commissioners who'd like to comment? Seeing none, are there any public that would like to comment on the situation?
Mr. Chairman, we do have someone with their hand up. I will ask Laney Meyer to unmute her microphone.
Okay, good morning, Laney.
Good morning. I, I really want to support continual looking at ways to reduce population.
Laney, excuse me, but could you state your name and your address?
Oh, sorry, Laney Meyer, Huntington Road, Salina.
Thank you.
I really want to support continuing to work on ways to reduce the population. I was a big advocate for a new jail, not to keep more people in as a moneymaker, but to do things to add space where we could treat the people in jail with more and perhaps advanced ways of helping them learn that they are more than just their behavior. And so I'm a strong advocate for the, the Council. I don't totally understand what, what the Council's all about, but I'm a strong advocate for anything that will take a look at a big, big picture and use the added space in the new prison, or in the new jail to help people take a look at themselves at a very deep level and hopefully make changes so they don't keep going back. Thank you.
Thank you, Laney. Any other public comments?
This is Commissioner Vidrickson, and, and I strongly agree with Ms. Meyer regarding this. On the other hand, I think with the new jail, that we're gonna have room in there for programs and so forth that will potentially take the place of this, this jail reduction committee. At least that's my thinking, that hopefully that, that's what will happen through the programs that will be established within the, the walls of the jail itself. And I'm hoping that happens. Now, do we need a citizens group slash committee slash commission group? I don't know. But I, I certainly am, am thinking that when the new jail is built, that that will certainly be a priority. I know it will be a priority with Sheriff Selden to, to address these situations, so.
I just want to clarify, this is Commissioner Shadwick, and I do want to clarify, you know, I just, I said something about Annie's program and failed to kind of mention the name. The pre-trial program came out of this. Drug Court, obviously, I mentioned before, and I think that there's potential to maybe even do a veteran court that's very successful around the country. I also think that, I, I still would like to see this Committee do things because Commissioner Vidrickson's point about the jail is well-taken, and I agree with him, but I think that they're gonna be so concentrating on the building of the jail for this next year, and I think somebody outside of the system looking at, at issues would be helpful. I also think we have a county attorney that's interested in, in looking at different things while reducing the jail population, so. And I, I think Commissioner Vidrickson might be right down the road, but right now I think that's a separate citizen group, I think.
Commissioner Wees here. I would, I would refer to Monty of whether being, you've served on that for so long that, that you know what has worked and what hasn't worked, whether it's the size of the Committee, the people they brought together. Are there, are there anything you would suggest happen if the jail committee continues to change the format or, or the structure of it?
Well, I think my timeline might be off a little bit, but I think it was originally, we had like 15 people on there, 18 people. That was burdensome. Meetings, I don't know, and just as the time went on and, and, you know, successes of the drug court and successes of the pre-trial and the judges being a, you know, buy-in and all this was good, but then the focus of this just went to hell, and so we probably haven't met or talked about any other programs for the last two years. I'm thinking probably somewhere in the middle of that 15 to 18 to five or six jail committee people. So, you know, seven to nine folks, I think would be helpful. And again, they won't be making any decisions. Sheriff, somebody from the Sheriff's Office will obviously be part of that, too. But I, I think we could get back together and just start brainstorming some things with about seven to nine. This is Commissioner White, a couple of comments basically for Commissioner Shadwick. And I guess my question is, or my comment basically is, thank you, Monty, for bringing that to our attention. That's something that we kind of overlooked. And with your expertise and your knowledge and your history, would it be possible that you got with Phil, who has some ideas on the numbers and all that, and maybe bring back a recommendation with even some names that we could appoint? I'm, I'm assuming that needs to be appointed by resolution anyway. Would, would you be willing to do that? Yes, Commissioner, I would, and I, I think that just, we'd probably tweak the original resolution. I've looked at it a little bit. I don't remember reading that five years or six years ago, so it needs to be tweaked a little bit. I would also lean on Andy Grievous, probably, who's been on the Committee the entire time also. And I think between us, kind of come up with something, bring it back to the Commission. Sound like a plan, thank you.
Good one, yep. Thank you, Monty, and all the Commissioners. Any other comments? Okay. Are there any Commissioner updates, Administrator updates?
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Chair, County Administrator Phil Smith Haynes again. Three things that I wanted to mention today. Legislative update, we've talked for the last two weeks about Senate Bill 13. They did have the hearing last Tuesday afternoon, and I listened into that. It was an extensive hearing, lasted about two hours. There were a number of suggestions for amendments, and I believe they are intending to work those amendments in the House Tax Committee this afternoon, so I will try and tune in again and, and see where that goes. Also, yesterday afternoon, the city of Salina, City Commission, held a study session on housing. And ultimately, they decided on a two-pronged approach. They are going to revise their housing study, but the Commission has also asked for presentations of specific proposals to be brought forward to them. The city staff has been contacted by some developers who are interested in housing development. So continue to monitor that just from the standpoint that some of those developments are asking for tax abatements that would potentially affect the county revenues as well. So just continue to maintain that as a point of interest. And then I thought I would throw in something a little bit different this week. Last week, I attended a conference. Attended is an interesting phrase this, in, in the current environment, because everything is on Zoom. So I sat at my desk for six hours last week and watched people on video. But it was actually good, particularly the second day, got a lot of tips in the areas of emergency management, budget communication, and some things that we can do with our staff. So I've already been sharing those with emergency management. And next week, Wichita State will be doing their winter conference for managers in the same format. So if you see me with my door closed, I'm at a conference again. So, but those have been pretty valuable so far. Looking forward to next week. That's all I had for today, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, are there any comments? Any Commissioner comments? Seeing none, are there any announcements? And I guess it looks like we have a executive session?
Yes, sir. Staff would request an executive session for 20 minutes for the purpose of discussing employer-employee negotiations.
Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the employer-employer negotiations exemption to the Kansas Open Meeting Act for 20 minutes. We convene in this room at 10:25.
Commissioner Wees, I second the motion.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I will call to a vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr., and I recessed executive session under the employer-employer negotiation exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 20 minutes and convene at, at 8:25. We are back into regular session. Can I get a motion that we go back into executive session under the employer-employer negotiations for, act for 10 minutes and convene at 8:37?
10:37.
Yeah, 10:37, I'm sorry.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into, back into executive session. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson?
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We are back into executive session. Are there any other comments?
Move adjourned.
You better bring us back into regular session.
We are, we are back into regular session at this point. And are there any other comments to be made by at this time? There's no action out of the executive session at this time. So at that, this, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.